Phones off please. Leon?
Are you watching?
Thank you. Okay, welcome everyone. Apologies. Mayor Dennis and also CEO Colin. And we'll just move straight into the business plan and budget. I dare say there are questions and things that people want to bring up. Anyone want to start the conversation?
Well, yes. I've got a question that perhaps someone can answer me in the draft budget.
Excuse me, so sorry, Mayv, do we need to pass a motion to suspend standing orders?
Yes, we do. I'll move that way.
Thank you.
And secondly, Cathy, councillor Webb. All those in favour? Yep, Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so councillor Robinson.
Yes, my question is regarding the reshooting programme in the business plan. It says we're doing 76 kilometres at a cost of 2.1 million, which equates to 27,600 a kilometre. And in the draft programme, it says we're doing 72 kilometres at a cost of 1.75 million, which equates to 24,300. Now, both of those kilometre rates seem to be very high compared to what we would have been doing. I think we've got it down to a bit under 20,000 per kilometre, nineteen and a half or something. Can someone explain that, please?
So get ready to go, Peter.
Yep. Yeah, look, the 76 we worked on for this year, a bit about the same last year. 72, 76, we've got 72 in there, probably should read 76 for next year. The cost, we've done it this year, and again, we've looked at, we've looked at the value per kilometre. And for the last few years, we've done dollars per kilometre, which is not the most ideal way to look at it. So we did the first year or so since I've been here, we did the first couple of years. First three years, really, without too much difficulty in terms of achieving kilometres for the costs. Now, this year, we haven't done so, we didn't pull it, and we've done it fairly easily. Basically, on the selection of roads, we've done without thinking too much about it. So when we look at the roads that we had in the programme this year, we've got wider roads, deeper material on those roads. A lot more in terms of colts and things like that, which really speaks about the kilometre approach to costing your roads just, just isn't, doesn't work. You've got significant difference between roads, and as we've got to the end of this year, we've seen that we've that we've had some blowouts in a, in a few different roads there, significant ones, which led us to look at why are those, why is that occurring? So when you consider the difference between a six metre wide road and an eight metre wide road, you've got 60% more material on a, on an eight metre wide road. We've done some pit renovation this year, and a lot of the sum, and certainly more than what we've done in, in other recent years. And the costs for that go into the actual reshooting. I thought they'd probably go into lot of rating costs, but they don't, they go into the reshooting. So that's a, you know, you can look at it a couple of different ways, and it's a reasonable cost associated with production of your own level. So it's not an unfair cost. So the, so we've got, like I said, some significant cost increases on a couple of roads this year based on the actual volume of material that's gone into it, into it. And associated works like the number of, number of colts and things like that. It will require, and I'm highlighting that in the report to council in the infrastructure report next meeting, a, a report back to council to, to explain and to detail where those costs have, costs have occurred in this year's programme.
Thank you, Peter. So in the business plan on page 12, you've got the 1.75 kilometres for 70, at 1.5 1.75 million for the 72 kilometres, and then on page 15, you've got the 2.1 for 76. Should they read the same figure on both pages?
The intent has been to try and, and do the 76 kilometres a year. Again, as we look at it from the, the perspective of estimating from first principles, we're looking at the width of the road, the depth of the material, where we're getting the material from, how we're carting that material. All of those things that we should be looking at anyway, we just haven't the last few years. Then we get to the point where we can, where we've got, we've got a dollar value in the programme, which is 1.75. And subject to the width of the roads, and again, the up and makeup of those roads, it could be 72, it could be 76, it could be 78. So the, it's more about achieving the length of road that we can for the, for the dollar value, as opposed to saying that's a kilometre rate that we're going to try and achieve. So it's about, it's about the makeup and volumes and quantity of the material in the roads, more so than the, than the distance. But we are looking to try and get around that 76 if we possibly can.
So I was just sort of thinking for continuity on the, in the document, on page 12, you've got the 1.75, on page 15, it's 2.1. Should they both read the same? No, says David. Yes, David?
It's probably worth me just clearing that up so we don't get confused. Page 15 is about reflecting on the current year. So all of those bits of information in there refer to what's in the current budget and what we expect to achieve by June 30. So that's part of the business plan requirements is to actually talk about what we achieved in the current year. So that's supposed to be different from what's in next year's draft budget. So that's why there's a difference in those figures.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Mayv?
Yeah, sort of. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, councillor Webb.
Yeah, it'd be helpful if we could go through page by page. Back on page nine, where it mentions the Nadjuri people, considering we received a new map about the Nukunu, shouldn't they both be mentioned?
I, I had the same point, and I said, I sort of thought we perhaps need to put Nukunu first and Nadjuri second, because Nukunu is now a, a larger part of the district.
Okay.
Anyone else?
So, excuse me, so. I'll just, I, I spoke to Gabby as planning officer about that. And she emailed me back and said, because there is an ongoing court case regarding that, at the moment, you don't include any Aboriginal peoples' names in there when there is an ongoing court case occurring.
Fair enough. Thank you. So until that court case is cleared out, Nukunu does not get a mention at all?
That's, that's my understanding from what Gabby sent me through, yes.
Okay.
Can I, can I get a clarification, can I get a clarification on that? Can I get that clarified?
Yes, like, just bear with me, Ben, I'll read out Gabby's email if you don't, if you hang on a tick.
Well, I'll ask my question just so you understand what, what I'm asking in, in the direction, that is, if you're saying not to include the Nukunu, would you not in, would you not include the Nadjuri as well, or are you leaving one in and taking one out? Because the council has actually always had both groups, just that the boundary shifted.
Gabby's email says that we don't refer to the Nukunu because there is a dispute ongoing in the courts. And then she's got specific, this should be used where there are no disputes, and you know the name of the people on whose land you are gathered. So that's, that's the information that she has passed on to me. And it seems that she is quoting directly out of information that she has received because she's been involved in that. Well, not involved, but has been the council contact in that court case. I can, I can get further information from Gabby if that's what you'd like me to do.
Well, well, I, I think we can leave it for now because this, we, we're not actually, well, unless we decide to put this out, but we could leave it till the council meeting, because there's a few other things that need clearing up as well before it goes out for public consultation. We just need to ask David that question. Would the next council meeting timeframe still work, David?
Okay, so in terms of timeframes, the other thing we have to consider is that it's good practice for the audit committee to actually review this document before consultation commences.
Yep.
So there's, there's no re, I'm not necessarily expecting capital will approve that step at this meeting, there's no requirement for council to do so. As has always been said, if you feel like another workshop is needed to iron out some of the, the questions in, in the budget and business plan, and that's quite feasible as well. So there's no particular rush with it, it's purely in the hands of council. But if, yeah, certainly if these things, if you're in a position after tonight, but you've got a couple of lingering questions that you want to leave it till the council meeting to go to that step to approve for consultation, subject to the audit committee having a quick review before the consultation commences, that's fine too.
Did you have another, did you respond to that councillor Brown, or did you have another question?
No, I want to respond to that a bit, just, just to clarify it a bit, that's all. And, and that is.
It just, Pollard has a question.
Well, what do you want to go first? Do you want me to finish with the, the conversation with David?
Finish that off.
Yeah.
While I was asking.
Yeah. David, now, when are you envisaging an audit committee meeting? For a start, and obviously, I think you've answered the fact on the timeframe, so yeah, I suppose, when are you envisaging an audit committee meeting? And is that, is that process okay? We can approve it subject to the audit committee, because the audit committee can't really make a decision, it can only make a recommendation back to council, so the, the process, I suppose.
Yeah, bit of background, I guess the last couple of years, the audit committee had a look at it during the consultation phase, and at that time, the advice was that that was fine to do. Advice has since changed that the audit committee should definitely look at it before the consultation commences. Our next scheduled audit committee meeting is around the 11th of June, but now that we do need to have one before consultation commences, we'll need to call just an audit committee meeting that could just look at the business plan as the sole item, and with the independent member in Adelaide and, and this current situation, we would just do that over Zoom, and I don't imagine that would be too much of an issue.
And that would be before the council meeting?
No, it doesn't need to be before the council. The first step is that the council body decide that it's ready for consultation, and it can do that subject to the audit committee looking at it before the consultation commences.
Okay. But so to your satisfaction, councillor Brown?
Well, just the only, the only point with that is if the audit committee does come up with something, it then has to go back to council before it can go out for consultation. That would be my view. Would that be correct, David?
Look, that makes sense, and I'd probably agree with that. I guess we we definitely need the audit committee to look at it. We wouldn't expect that they would come up with anything that should preclude it from going to consultation, it would have to be something fairly significant, remembering that some sort of draft has to go to consultation, and there will be some changes before that version is adopted when council does that, possibly later in June.
Okay. Okay, councillor Brown?
Yeah, yeah, look, move on to councillor Pollard, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Pollard, you had a question?
Yeah, now mine relates to the previous subject, I just got missed out. He's got a bit out of whack, to Peter. Did you say that the wider road needs 60% extra material?
That's correct, yeah.
Yet it's only 30% wider.
It's deeper, thicker as well. Class, class two runs thicker than your class threes and fours.
Okay.
The deep shape.
Okay, councillor Pollard?
I don't particularly understand that, but there again, I'm not a road builder, so.
Yeah. Well, from what Peter said, the road is, because it's a wider road, it's a different category, and it needs more product on the road, thus the increase in cost.
Well, look, that, that's true, but it's also always been the case, and it, and it's always factored into our equations in the past, so I, I don't quite understand why it's become a significant problem now, because we've always had, I remember when the road past here was done, it's a higher prior, higher use road. Makes sense to put more material on when you're doing it, I know that, but it's all done on averages. It always has been done on averages. I mean, some roads don't go anywhere near costing 20,000, some cost more, and the average comes in where the averages come in for many years.
Well, I, I think we've probably asked Peter's department for a better than average price. I think he's had to narrow it down fairly severely to an actual price, not an average, which is what you're getting with his input tonight.
Well, no, that's not correct at all. The, the reality is we've done a budget and an average for years, and I mean, it's always been it. Some roads have always cost more than $20,000 a kilometre, and some roads have cost less. That, that's the way it's been for the, for the, I've been on council for 15 years, and that's always the way it's been. It's never been any different. And, and the idea that we've ever costed roads in this part of the process to that level, we, we don't get presented enough information to know that. So, though, though that's just not correct.
So two things to answer that. Firstly, we'll give you a report on the, on where the costs have gone this year and what's associated with them. And the second thing is for the approaching year, we'll be doing the, the estimates beforehand on the basis of the works that are required for them. So they're the two things that I can do to, to answer those questions.
Okay, councillor Pollard, councillor Brown?
Oh, we'll just leave it for now. It's not really a topic for tonight, it's not on the agenda for tonight, but yeah, there's a few issues to come up later on, for sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other things noted from the business plan?
So just a comment from me, please.
Yes, councillor Higgins?
I'm just wondering whether we're getting so much information that in fact we are bogging ourselves down a bit. And it just, just seems to me that we seem to be going back over stuff, and I'm wondering whether we are worrying at bones that we don't need to worry at, at the moment. Just a, just a comment at this stage. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I see where you're coming from. There was a few, a couple of things in the business plan that people have noticed. I guess that's what we're looking at tonight. Is there any more input to that?
Yes, I, I have some other stuff that we need to, what, we, we need to consider, because we need the information we've had on, like in the plant replacement, right, which is a significant spend, and certainly the, there's two in there, there's the S line water truck, which I, I believed we dealt with a couple of meetings ago, but it's still, it's back there again, so I'm not sure about that. And the bulldozer. Now, Peter will recall that after that report on crushing was presented to council, that we had a conversation and determined that, in fact, we weren't comparing apples with apples, because we do not currently crush 100% of our material. And that the justification for a bulldozer that needs further looking at.
Certainly that's the case, and I'm presenting to you what is, what was presented to council and accepted as the second year of the plant replacement programme, there are the items in the plant replacement programme.
The, the, the justification for the bulldozer, the, the whole cost around the justification for bulldozer versus contract. When that report was presented to council, it was inaccurate. You agreed with that in a, in a post discussion. So that still needs to be cleared up, and we need to sort out the actual justification for the purchase of the dozer before we would, would do it. It's in the, it's in the plan, I accept that it was in the plan, but that was in the plan from some material that's not it, it's certainly not as it was presented to council, it was an apples with apples, which you would have to agree that after our discussion and we talked about, we do not do the same things as what was quoted, that there's two different things being looked at.
What we've got in there is the, is the, is the items from the, from the plant replacement programme. What you don't have is a report that says, this is what we're looking to purchase and for council to consider to actually purchase. Now, bulldozer, whether it's a, a large or a small one, whether it's a second hand one, whether it's a new one, council do require some kind of a bulldozer to continue their operations, and the one we've got is very old. So without going into too much detail, it's probably unnecessary at this stage. We're a long way from deciding on what, on what that bulldozer will be.
And, and the water truck?
And the water truck? You've got a report, again, infrastructure report coming to you next week, which we'll talk about those. The S line's not the one we talked about the other week. We've got two, two international trucks. The other, the international truck that was un-roadworthy continues to be un-roadworthy, and has not been used on the road, as was asserted.
Thank you. Is that satisfactory, councillor Brown? It is not a definite, it's just in the budget?
Well, that's right, but it, it's just, there's just some more stuff we need, more information on some of those things, for sure.
Information is to follow. Okay. And I think I tend to agree with Denise, we're looking too much at the detail at this stage. Okay, councillor Webb?
Yeah, well, mine's in the detail. I've actually gone through page by page with questions on various things. On page 18 of the 52, section seven, user paid charges. My question is, how long is it going to be before the JDA takes over the hall? James?
I can probably answer with how long is a piece of string? Reality is you can't toss anyone in jail if they don't take over management of the hall, with the process working through, which is not a simple task. And there's obviously been some work gone on the hall, which has been one thing which the JDA has stressed has been highly important before they made any considerations. So that's, it's obviously been leeway there, and it's just a matter of, I think there's been some discussions with that, and a few happenings at the halls about what may happen now that there's been additional solar placed onto a number of sites, and how that may impact the financial situation. But I, I can't speak on their behalf, I'm sorry.
Ben, anyone from the JDA tonight give us an inkling as to why or how this can be resolved?
So, if I can just make a comment, we're waiting on, JDA is waiting on council, we'll come back with some more information. And that hasn't happened, mainly because prior to the, this virus coming around, the, the meetings were on a Monday night, which were, I think it was Easter Monday, they just clashed, and it wasn't convenient for Colin to come to the meeting, so that's why nothing has progressed at this stage.
But it's getting, is it getting close to finalisation?
I, I think if council upgrades the hall, and I know there's $70,000 in the budget for the, doing the walls externally to get them up to standard, and doing other maintenance, I think JDA probably would take it on. But we need to just tidy up those jobs that haven't been done as yet.
Okay. Have you got another question, councillor Webb?
It's more, you know, bits and pieces. I think if I just type it up and email it to everybody, and those that have a, a relevance on it, and if anybody wants to comment, that might be the easiest way. Otherwise, we could be here all night.
Okay. Any other questions, people?
Yes, I have another one, and I, I know I bring it up most years regarding the caravan parks. You know, we've got a, a budget item of 19,000, and yet I think we only give each caravan park, park, what, 4,000 each? And I know Laura, I think, is to do with water, we share water, but I would like to see that that sharing of water sorted out, so that people who pick up the budget don't think that we're giving 19,000 to the caravan parks.
David?
Okay. Without drilling into the, what we've actually been spending there. Yes, Mayv's right about the water, and that would apply at both parks, just the Laura Park has a greater water amount, and there, there probably is a little bit of a costing issue and not being able to separate where the water's actually being used in that vicinity, I think is what the, what the story is. There are sundry costs that would come out of there as well, some of the probably when the septics need the sludgeing, or possibly the the ones that, the dump points, when they need sorting out and annual backflow testing and all that sort of stuff, all that, all those type of things does, does add up.
And they're all things to help tourists that are coming through our region. So is it really, and it, and it adds so great an expense that we need to analyse it each year, councillor Robinson?
Yes, I, I realise that, but we don't put money into the Jamestown Caravan Park, never have.
But the Jamestown Caravan Park is privately owned on private land, is that correct? David?
Yeah, I believe so, because it's currently for sale.
Right, whereas the two caravan parks in James and Gladstone and Laura are on crown land, and they are community run. And they give back to the community and they give to tourism.
Look, I, I think what can't, the point councillor Robinson's making, he's, he's not talking about adjusting the money, but he's talking about severing it, separating out the water, so that for people that look at it and don't get the, the impression, like somebody from Jamestown looks at it and goes, why are we paying $20,000 to caravan parks in Lauren Gladstone, and nothing happens over here? When in fact, the, a vast majority of the bill is, is water that's used to water something else in, in law? When in fact, a vast majority of the bill is, is water that's used to water something else in Laura. So, you know, it's, it's how it appears in the budget, I think, was councillor Robinson's problem more than the fact that the money actually goes there, but what it looks like and to change the way it looks. Is that what you were really after?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. People pick it up and they see a figure of 19,000 for caravan parks, but it's not actually 19,000. It's a lot less. And if we could somehow split it so that the water bill is going into the water account and not into the caravan parks, it would reduce that and whatever other costs there are as well.
Do we get questions each year regarding this money, David?
Probably only in this forum. Not externally to council. I mean, it's probably reasonable to say that if the Gladstone figure is around that 7, 7 figure, that Laura should be similar. I just had a look then, the water bills so far this year were up between the parks is about $8,000. It's just a matter of working out, I think there's obviously been work in the background to sort out that metering. But even if that's not quite sorted, there's probably an estimate that could be made that we split the water bill, the portion to say Parks and Gardens where it's really being used outside of the park. Not going to change the overall budget, but it'll make the caravan park situation look a bit better.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
That sounds like a solution, thank you. Councillor Webb?
Right, whilst we've got David, on page 48 of the 52, economic development, in the first column for the 2019-20, it's showing two lots of 21,500, which comes to, with the totals in that column, comes to 379,500. I'm not sure that that one of those 21,500s should be there.
Okay, so what we have there is normally we're only reporting on account level. So the, the first line this year with a 19,000 and last year with a 21 and a half is the account level line. The two caravan parks are at job level. Sometimes to give the detail, we go into job level. What you can see there is in this year, it's split between the two. But in the previous year, it's just showing in one of the jobs. So that the 21 and a half listed for Laura last year is just totaled up to the account above. There's nothing actually showing for Gladstone. So it's the same figure, it's just, it's just allocated for one of them for whatever reason that it's done that. But we, there's definitely only one figure for this year that we, on the current numbers of 19,000 that we would be adopting as the budget.
Okay.
And also, if I can just add, I'm talking page 48. I brought up at the last budget meeting, the AGL grant, receive 27,300 and spend 28,000, that hasn't been altered in the budget figures.
duly noted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, James. Did someone else have their hand up? Leon, councillor Pollard?
Yeah, Peter, thanks very much for those reports that we asked for last time. Very good. The New Seals was a list that came out in 2017, so I did never really get it, neither did Denise. So only one career I've got on it is, I did happen to find a copy of the original list, which had Brown Street and Kowtawie on it. And this one's got Depot Hill Road and what's happened there?
It's the year, it's the year four and five and they've been adjusted with, in relation to the square meterage just to try and get a bit of better, closer, better evening out. If we leave Kowtawie Road in there, sorry, the Brown Street, Kowtawie in there, that's significantly higher square meterage in this year than next year. Given that three of the four roads were Jamestown, switch of that, that fourth road into Jamestown, it leaves the others out of the area. So we're just not moving the equipment around so far for those roads in this coming year.
Does, will Brown, Brown Street be done at some stage?
Year five of the programme, we'll complete all of the roads that were approved by council. So the year after, 21, 22, when those last streets will be done, including Brown Street, Kowtawie.
Thank you.
Okay, the questions are starting to thin out. So no more, councillor Pomeranki?
I just got a question further on the fee, fees and charges. So probably for David, just the, is there increases, just the reasons behind their increases?
Okay, thank you. It's probably best to sort of break them down a little bit and go through some of the reasons why. Transfer stations is a good example that that hasn't changed for a number of years. Probably that's more of a question for Peter, but we'll come back to that if need be.
Age?
Age 49.
49.
Things like town halls, last year we left it the same with no change, partially because of the Jamestown and Sporting Halls, the discussions around if the development boards take over the running of the halls, it's really up to them to then decide what level of fees they want to charge. So that's been the approach the last couple of years. Dog registration fee, so that's certainly one that we had a close look at. That's got a bit of a different cycle to council because the board is after council's figures prior to when we adopt it. That may well be in Peter's next council report, but we, across the state, certainly fees are a lot higher metropolitan, but in our own region, we're one of the highest ones. So we're sort of still just above most of our neighbours by not touching those. And in general, it's a reflection of the current situation that if we're still looking at a rate increase, we're not going to make much out of increasing some of those fees and charges. So that's sort of been the agreed approach, recommended to council to consider. Certainly you can change that.
Can I just make a comment regarding the dogs fee? And I brought it up at the last budget meeting. We really, if we can't put our fees up, we've really got to look at our expenses. If we can cut them back, you know, 50,000 we're spending or proposed to spend, where our income was 36,000. Can that be done?
So with regard to the, to that budget, I think as David mentioned at the last meeting, we don't, the expenditure there is based on casual, casual employment and a lot of, some, some response to, to, you know, dogs getting out and things like that, whether, whether we need that officer to go and attend to things. So the expenditure, like David mentioned, we haven't expended all of that in a number of years. And we're not planning necessarily to spend on that. But if the, if the requirement is there, well, the budget is there to be able to manage that. We're now going to do a significant number of licence checks and things like that this year to thaw up on things within, within and under that budget year to date.
Councillor Pomeranki, do you have anything more to say?
Yes, I had also on the annual contributions to the community groups on the following pages, what, page 52, last page, just the 1.5% increase CPI. Just the justification being that, I just consider maybe a bit low and should be similar to the rates increase to be matched with that.
Discussion?
Probably David again, I guess.
I'm going to hand that one to James if I can.
Thank you councillor. To be honest, that's, that's indicative and it's a little fluid as we get a little bit closer due to the fact that, I don't know if anyone's, I'm sure councillor Brown's a news junkie and was watching the budget discussions today, but, and probably councillor Pollard, but people like me who like numbers read that stuff, that can very simply be adjusted. It's envisaged as we get later in this quarter, I would imagine the CPI rate will probably not be on the highest spectrum, so I agree with you.
It was mainly, mainly from why are we using CPI and why isn't it similar to the rates increase? And I just, Ben?
Yeah, look, the CPI, the rates, the rates increase at 3.1 includes growth. CPI is only 2.5 and I mean CPI as it applies to local governments, a little different than what it applies to generally across the community. But I guess, you know, it's reasonable that it can run around 2.5. CPI will be under that this year. It depends where you're spending your money as to how it affects you really. You know, if you're spending all your money on fuel, you really wouldn't be expecting a CPI. You'd nearly be going down. So it just depends where you're spending your money as to how CPI really impacts it. And so power consumption stuff like that with the stuff we've done with solar and things like that for most halls, that would be their biggest expense and that's going to be significantly better than it has been. Well, some halls already had it, but for the halls that didn't have it, it's going to be significantly better for those halls. So cancer's already done a lot for them. So, you know, whether it's two, two and a half percent increase, it's, it's not going to, not going to make a whole, a whole lot of difference. As long as, as long as council does what it does in the maintenance and looking after the buildings. I think, you know, the rest of it is pretty reasonable, really.
So what would you suggest councillor Pomeranki?
I just, yeah, wanted some justification why it's dropping down from, it's been 2% for the last few years and suggested there to go to 1.5.
Okay, James?
We're happy to look at that and revise it as it needs to be, that's fine.
It's just something to consider.
Not a problem at all.
Date needs changing at the top of that one too.
The date where it says 2021, sorry?
Yeah, well, mine's saying 2121.
In the yellow.
Yeah.
In the yellow on page 52, over on the right hand side.
Oh, sorry, I'm on a different page. Okay, yep.
Yeah, so CPI probably won't make, probably won't make 1.5 for the year now. I don't know what it'll make, but it probably won't.
Okay. We're nearly to the end of discussions here. So where do you want to go from here, people?
Well, I, I think, whether we leave it on the, whether we leave it on the table till the next council meeting. Because I think there's a little bit more stuff to come back before we just send it out for public consultation subject to the audit committee. So we really don't need to, if there's no, nothing major coming up tonight, we don't really need to do anything till the next council meeting, probably.
Councillor Higgins?
I just wanted to commend the people who put this together in terms of the way that, because I bang on about strategic plan, but the way that it now sits within strategic plan to some degree. And it just makes the reading of it and connecting to strategic plan useful for me. So thank you to whoever has put it together that way.
Yep, tend to agree. So we'll just leave, so do we need to come back into standing orders, Paula?
Yes, so if we finish discussion, then we do.
Yep.
A move that we resume standing orders.
You moved that way, do you councillor Brown?
Yes, I did.
Seconded councillor Higgins, all those in favour? Thank you. Okay, is that the end of this?
Well, I just moved, there's a recommendation there, but I just, I can move either, we either do nothing or we move a procedural motion just to leave it lying on the table till the next meeting.
I don't think we need to move the procedural motion, do we, Paula?
Well, there is a recommendation there, that's all we need to.
Recommendation, but I'm not sure, sorry, I'm not quite as good as Colin.
Look, it's neither here nor there. If we do nothing, it's not really a big problem.
But if you want to make it more official, we can.
No, there's really, no, thinking about, there's really no need to because it's only, you know, certain reasons, certain times you do do that so that everyone's clear what you're doing. But I mean, it's just really, we're not going to make a decision tonight. So, yeah, like, I mean, it's not going to make a lot of difference either way, really.
Okay, councillor Webb?
Yeah, in light of the fact that I've got some questions and suggestions that may have some play on what answers we get back. So I will email that out to everybody and we'll see what the answers are that come back. So I'm in favour of holding this until those responses are before the council meeting.
Okay. So if there's nothing more, I guess this meeting is closed at, what time is it?
Holy dole.
At 7:47. Thank you, everyone. Now, before we switch off, Denise has said to me,